I will now call back to order the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting for September 23rd, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Engelberg?
Here.
Mr. Adamo?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Lavin?
Here.
Mr. Remus?
Here.
Ms. Yon?
Here.
Ms. Berger, Mr. Berger?
Here.
Motion carries.
I will now invite all members of the board, administration, and community to stand at attention facing the flag with their right hand over their hearts to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight we have the student spotlight from DPM, and I will turn it over to Sam.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to get our screen up here so we can follow along. All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for hosting us. I'm Sam Paulson. I'm the 7-8 principal. I'm joined by Mrs. Carly Harvey, our 5-8 assistant principal, and our wonderful guests who you'll get to meet in a moment. This is always a huge highlight for us during the school year. We know that the real stars of the show are here to share about their experience at school. So we will talk very briefly just about some of the focus areas that we are engaging in at Deer Path, some exciting stuff to share, and then we'll turn it over to our friends just so they can talk about their experience as a student in District 67. So today, we really wanted to focus on just a handful of things that we're really trying to get off the ground at Deer Path, no pun intended, with our wonderful space theme. So be brave, reach beyond is the theme of our school year. And this quote I thought really resonated in a time when we want students to embrace perseverance and show their wonderful abilities to rise when challenges are at their toughest. That rigor is something we've really tried to stress with the adults of how can we elevate the bar for students to rise up and extend themselves and reach it? And also, being a kid is hard, especially in middle school, and how can we help them navigate things beyond just the classroom and grow as individuals too? And that really connects to what I feel is our North Star as the district, which is the portrait of a learner. So the portrait is something that we've been slowly injecting into the school and trying to make it come to life, more than just something on the wall, but something that kids know and talk about. So the portrait competencies is something that we've slowly been incorporating, and I have some wonderful examples of what our teachers have been doing. So here is a series of photos from various teachers. So you'll see this is a portrait of an artist. This is from one of our new art teachers, Mrs. Fontana. And each example going around the star is one of the competencies and what it means to show that in her classroom. And then across some of our other classrooms, we started to create that as well. So portrait of a Latin scholar, portrait of a musician, and really trying to establish that no matter what content you teach, no matter what class you're in, this is a chance for you to develop these things on top of academic excellence, but the characteristics we hope every child has by the time they graduate as a senior in high school. Mrs. Harvey?
Another way that we've been working to make the portrait come to life for students is just through our everyday behavior expectations and the teaching behind those things. One thing that we put in place at DPM this school year is this graphic you can see here. They're called guidelines for success. It was one thing that we felt was missing from Deer Path. You know, at Cherokee, they have be respectful, responsible, and safe in every common area and into classrooms. And so classroom expectations are taught around those three things. At Everett, they have SOAR, and at, and S-O-A-R stand for different things that students can hold themselves to, and they kind of transcend every area in the school. Teachers can talk about how to embody those things. At Sheridan, it's show your spark, and that's their acronym. So we have put into place, we are DPM, being dependable, positive, and mindful. And we put that into place at the beginning of the school year especially about how can you be dependable, positive, and mindful in the lunchroom? How can you be dependable, positive, and mindful in the hallways? Teachers have taken this into their classroom and partnered it with their champs' expectations for their classes. And we took it one step further, and we thought, how can we begin to teach kids how these things can help them reach those competencies in the portrait? We're talking a lot about the portrait of a learner to students. And so when you are dependable, you're showing things like citizenship and communication. And so we're continuing to have lessons through our classes and through our advisories around this, and then teachers are coming back to this when they're giving positive reinforcement to their students for meeting expectations and also referring to it when we need to fluently correct students. So it's a new thing you come to Deer Path, you'll see around our classrooms and in our hallways. We also want students to experience what it's like to embody the competencies of the portrait. So one amazing opportunity we've already had with our fifth graders this school year is our field trip to Boundless Adventures, thanks to the Spirit of 67. And this has quickly become an annual tradition that we really look forward to. It's a very wonderful experience for all students, but I think particularly with fifth graders and the time of the school year that it happens. Three elementary schools coming together and people making new friends at a new campus and having an immediate opportunity to get to know their teachers, but to also get to know each other and work cooperatively together. So one of the things we did when we were there, after we came home, back to school, I should say, we had time for students to reflect on the experience with their advisories, so in small groups. And I know that it's probably hard to see some of these things, but I'd love to read the way that we tied the portrait into this field trip for students and how they could reflect on their growth with it. So one of the reflections that the students filled out says, how can you use what you learned in this experience in other life situations? The student wrote, we all did some scary courses, and that can help us be more confident. We also had different competencies listed from the portrait. Which one of these things did we need to, the most to have a successful adventure day? This student chose empathy, and why? Most people, including me, were scared, but we encouraged each other, and we regained our confidence. Yay. Another example about how you can use what you learn from the experience in other life situations. I can do hard things. Be confident in ourselves because it makes you think you can do it in hard times. Another competency a student correlated it with was confidence. I think confidence because you could have more fun if you tried stuff instead of doing nothing. What did you learn about yourself? I was frustrated on the blue, that was the most challenging course they could access, because there was a hard obstacle. Then I felt pride when I was finished. And so I just love not only these student responses, but also how they're reflecting and talking about these competencies in their real life. And while we have our special fifth grade guest with us tonight, at Deer Path, we've really made some intentional moves this school year to really make sure that the transition to middle school has been really positive for all of our students coming into fifth grade. Dr. Shen and I especially noticed, knowing some of our elementary schools so well, we noticed some opportunities to make sure that this transition was even more seamless than it had been in the past. So some things that we wanted to share with you tonight are some of the things that we've put into place. One of them being, grade-wide, the whole fifth grade, every student has an organization station. They call it an OS for short. And Emma Cherry was so nice to bring a visual tonight. So every student has something like this to help. And every teacher in fifth grade has collaborated to not only label it and organize it the same way, but maintain its organization, have checks on the materials that are in it, and help students maintain the system so they have all their materials with them in an organized way throughout the whole school day. And one of those tools that they also are using are planners. In the past, it's been a choice if a student wanted to keep track of their assignments in a planner or simply use Schoology, you put it in their iPad. And we certainly want students to have that independent choice and to be independent with that by the time they leave Deer Path and head into high school. But one thing we noticed is that fifth graders were not ready to independently make that choice when they came in. So every fifth grader has a Deer Path planner that they are using every day, and teachers have, in fifth grade, have all come up with a system to only, not only make sure that it's filled out within their class, but is complete by the time they end the day in their extended learning period. And then we've always had executive functioning lessons. We've always had SCL lessons, but we've done it in a more systematic and structured way in fifth grade this year where they have these lessons weekly, and they are grade level wide. So it is not dependent on which teacher you have and what lesson you get. They are across the grade level. So this picture, you can see students that on Monday just got an email, or a lesson on email etiquette and how to send messages through their emails and in Schoology, because those are new skills that fifth graders need to learn. And they learned the four components of a successful email, and they are talking about it, an engagement strategy, and then they got to practice it. You can see a screenshot. This one's kind of funny. It says, Dear Mrs. Ryan, how was your weekend? I will not be at school for a while because I'm moving to New York and then coming back after. I hope you understand. Thank you. Haley. And then at the bottom, she wrote, not really. But she did display that she had all four components of the email that were taught. These are just a few examples. We have a lot more, but I'm going to not just take it from me. I'm going to let you hear it from the students and their experience so far.
Are you ready?
Hello, my name, oh my god, sorry. Hello, my name is Hannah. And all the teachers at DPM have been so supportive and kind and have helped me adjust to this new school. The OS is very useful because I have a whole bunch of classes, and I couldn't carry everything from one class to another. The OS helps a lot and keeps everything organized for me. Ms. Mobio and Ms. Bo- Bo- Bogren have helped a lot. Ms. Mobio makes lessons fun, and Ms. Bogren helps us with, teaches us different strategies we could use. Power School and Schoology are new, and I'm honestly still learning them. They are really helpful to check your grades and find missing assignments. Also, using a planner helps me because I get a little extra information just in case if I don't read Schoology.
Hello, my name is Henry. I thought that DPM was going to be like same old, same old Everett, that we had to go from class to class in a line, but it's not. We can walk in the hall by ourselves and be way more independent. All our teachers help us write in our planners. If I forgot what my homework is, it's in my planner. I can look and say, oh, now I, now I know what it is. I like the organization station because all my things are together. I don't have to, I don't have to carry loose folders and notebooks from class to class. It's all in one place. Mrs. Percival is very caring. Mr. Smith and Mrs. Percival both encourage you, and they give you courage to try different things.
Hi, my name is Emma. One great tool we have in fifth grade is our organization's, organization station, or OS. I had one before in fourth grade, but it's helpful now because at DPM we have so much classes. I don't have to carry lots of folders, I don't have, so I don't have to carry lots of folders around. Everything is together, and I have my homework all in one spot. We're learning about volume and math, and we get to use new, new tools we didn't get to use before, like cubes and special whiteboards. DPM is definitely better than elementary school. We get to walk around by ourselves and go to different teachers, not just staying with the one teacher all day. We also have our own lockers and don't have to share cubbies. We have to keep our lockers organs, organized.
Hi, my name is Lily. I really like having a locker at DPM. I originally was really excited about the bells in passing periods and not having to walk in a line. DPM is sort of a big maze. My teachers helped me by walking us to encore classes, but now I think I have it all figured out. The teachers are really nice, and they're always there to help me. They give me really clear directions on what to do and when to do it. Power School is really exciting. I love being able to check my grades. Thank you.
So those are just some examples of the bravery that our students are exhibiting every day to come here and speak in front of our wonderful board. That takes a lot of courage, so kudos to you guys. And just thank you so much for having us. A lot of great, exciting stuff to come at Deer Path.
Can we ask the students, or maybe we request the students to come up and get a picture with the board? So one comment I will add is, as the parent of a fifth grader who went on the Boundless Adventures trip, it was a fantastic opportunity. So thank you to Deer Path for facilitating that, and thank you especially to Spirit for funding that. It's a great opportunity for the kids. So thank you, and thank you to all of the speakers. You guys did fantastic. Thank you. Great. We are going to move on to the budget meeting, or the budget hearing. May I have a motion to adjourn to the 2025-2026 final budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Yon? Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Am I turning it over to Dr. Hermes for the budget? Hearing? Oh. All right. I'm sorry, I was looking in the wrong direction. So thank you, Brittany. Thank you for using a Mac.
All right, I think we're good. Good evening. My name is Brittany Jardis. I'm the Director of Fiscal Services here at Lake Forest School District 67 and 115. And in partnership with Whitney Drager, the Director of Business Operations, we are pleased to present you the 25-26 budget hearing. So to begin the budget hearing, we want to provide a reminder of the legal requirements around Illinois school district budgets. As you may recall, at the August Finance and Operations Committee meeting, we took significant amount of time to review the tentative budget, at which time it went on display for public inspection for at least 30 days. At tonight's hearing, we're going to outline the changes that have been made since that tentative budget and provide a recommendation to the board to adopt the 25-26 budget, which legally must be done by September 30th. So the first side of the budget that we'll review is our revenues. All Illinois school districts have three primary sources of revenue, which we put into three different buckets: local, state, and federal. Your local sources are going to be your property taxes, CPPRT, impact fees, interest income, and any other fees such as student fees or food service fees. The next source that Lake Forest School District gets is state funds. This is going to be unrestricted funds, also known as your evidence-based funding that's coming out of Springfield, any reimbursements for your mandated categoricals, for example, transportation, and any restricted-use grants that are coming through the state. The final source is going to be your federal revenues, which are restricted-use grants, so think about idea and title funding. And we also get reimbursement through Medicaid for various services provided to our students. So when finalizing the 25-26 budget, we updated our estimates for revenues and expenditures based on new information that was provided since the tentative budget went on display. The bold red font on the screen outlines the one minor change that we updated for the tentative budget as it relates to revenues. So for this fiscal year, we have updated our estimates for funding source called E-Rate. It might be a new revenue source, maybe not pointed out, because it was an adjustment to tentative to final. We wanted to make sure to discuss it. So E-Rate is a federal program that provides schools with discounts for various technology supplies and services. And essentially, the intent is to help their districts grow their digital learning resources. One note about this funding, which is going to be, we estimate $22,000 for the fiscal year, is either going to be received in a reimbursement check back to the district, or it's going to be a credit on invoice that we pay for those applicable E-Rate supplies or services. Aside from the minor adjustment related to E-Rate, there was no new information that warranted that we needed to update our tentative revenues for the final budget. So this slide remains unchanged, and our estimates remain the same for tentative. All right. So how does this shake out for the 25-26 final budget? With that minor change, our final operating revenues are estimated to be just over $49 million. The intent of this slide is to show you a comparison of your tentative budget totals through your final, highlighting that minor adjustment of our federal revenues. Overall, operating revenues increased by 22,000 from tentative to final. Or another way we can look at it, it's 4.2% increase from our unaudited actuals last year. We're currently in our audit to make sure that that 47 million that we have recorded is accurate. That has increased our budget by 4.2 from that prior year actual. Another important note to point out is because school districts follow fund accounting, money is transferred between funds for specific expenditures. So for example, the Operation and Maintenance Fund makes an annual transfer to debt service to pay any outstanding debt. So you'll notice at the bottom, I do plus transfers between funds to show that money is moving. That's not new revenue. It just looks like it's revenue when you're transferring it between funds. So when we put all these items together, total revenues with our transfers for the fiscal year are projected at just over $50 million. Before I move to the next slide, I do want to pause a moment to take a time for you to review this, to let me know if you have any questions. All righty. All right. So to conclude our revenue portion of the budget hearing, we wanted to provide a further breakout of our revenue sources for the fiscal year. As we talked about earlier, the district's revenues comes from three primary sources, with local revenues accounting for 95% of our operating revenues. Within our local revenues, property taxes remain our largest source, accounting for 93% of our local revenues, and that's going to come in, we estimate, at just over $43 million for the fiscal year. I think this underscores the critical role our property tax owners have, whose tax contributions directly support the district's financial stability and the ability to serve our students. Now I'm going to turn it over to Whitney, and she'll review the expenditure side of the budget.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go over our expenditures. As we are a school district, we invest most of our dollars into human capital as we're here to educate our students. So here you can see just a quick snapshot of what our expenditures look like. We have 70% that go into our salaries and benefits. It's also important to note, within our professional services, there is a small amount in there that for any of our 115 shared service employees, 50% of their salaries and benefits are also in there. This is how we're required to report the shared services. And as Brittany had mentioned, there's also the transfers that are part of this. Again, those are not real dollars. They are just moving from one fund to another. During finance and ops, we did go through a, in depth with all of our objects, which are salaries, benefits, purchased services. I won't necessarily go into depth here, but you'll be able to see a lot of our high-ticket items within each of these categories. Just a quick example, you have our certified staff, non-certified staff. Our stipends are within the salaries. One thing to also note is what we are doing this year in order to be able to track our projects a little bit differently is, and we are separating out the various projects based upon how they are funded. So any, in Fund 60, we are, which is capital projects, we are going to show all of our capital projects that are funded by the debt service extension based funds. Fund 61 is going to be any capital projects that are funded by operational debt. And Fund 90 is our fire prevention and safety fund. This will be any projects that are funded by our life safety bonds. This slide will be important as we go further on, then you'll kind of understand why I'm going through that. What's important to note is between the tentative budget that we went through in depth at the finance and ops meeting, we did have lots of changes. So I do appreciate all the work that our budget managers did, because we did ask them to go back to their budgets and do a lot of fine tuning. There was a lot of changes based upon how we ended last year. There were also a number of changes based upon final figures that had, that we didn't know at the tentative budget time, where we did know them at the final budget. So some of our changes here, we were able to drop our repair and maintenance based upon how we ended last year by 8,000. The special education transportation, this saw a large decrease of 115,000. Reason behind that is because we had less students that needed transportation for this year compared to last year. And we were able to get that kind, we were able to get that information in. Related services, we were able to drop this 165,000, and this is in part to bring in the instructional coach position. the instructional coach position in-house, and also some adjustments with our speech position at True North. The others here under supplies, we have our utilities. Based upon trends, we were able to drop this $25,600, and this is going to be for your electric, your, your gas, and water. Capital outlay, we had cafeteria equipment that we were able to drop. We originally had that budgeted in our food service account. We were able to get that funded based upon our capital projects, so we were able to drop this $33,000. Another big drop that we saw was in tuition of $95,000. That was just based upon adjustments that were done based upon our special education students. And so you can see, we had lots of adjustments within special education, so this is where it's important to note, you know, as students are coming and going, we have to fluctuate based upon their needs, and so we can have a huge swing one way or another based upon those needs.
Can I just ask a question? The tuition, is that like tuition that we pay to True North, or where?
It could be tuition that we pay to True North, or it could be if we're outplacing any students.
One more thing, the special education transportation, because I thought all families pay for their own bus transportation, so is that not the case for the special education?
For certain special education students, that's not the case. We do have to fund that as if it's written into their IEP. Here's just kind of a quick snapshot. When we are looking at the tentative budget to the final budget, I did highlight where we did see our changes. So with all of our budget managers, we were able to drop the budget from tentative to final by about $615,000. And as I mentioned earlier, we had talked about our different capital project funds. So what we're doing on this slide is we're really taking out the Fund 60 and Fund 90 as those are funded by different dollars. We are taking those out so they don't really skew the picture too much. So here you'll see that we are having, we're looking to have a positive impact to the fund balance of $1.3 million. This is intentional. A couple of years back, I believe it's a couple of years now, when we added Cherokee, the Cherokee addition, we intentionally dipped into the fund balance to pay for this. And so we are currently in the rebuilding the fund balance years, and so this is why there is an intentional increase to the fund balance. So between that funding model and also with our D-Sub and our life safety bonds, this, all of this strategy really helps us to avoid going out for referendum as we're able to address the facility needs. Last slide, next steps are to approve the final budget this evening, and if there's any questions, or if there's any, if anybody's looking for some financial information, we do have lots of financial information and contracts on the website. And I don't know if there's any questions for either Brittany or I?
I have a question, Whitney. In 2024, we went to Moody's in connection with our, to get affirmation of our existing AAA bond rating, and we reported the cash and fund balance will materially strengthen over the next five years. If you could go back to the last slide, that 1.341, is that what we would, when you said that, that's what's going to wind up going to the fund balance, is that right?
Yes, that is the intention.
That's delivering on the promise we made to Moody's, or was, maybe wasn't a promise, but on what we expected to do for Moody's, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brittany, Whitney.
Thank you.
I should say, we do have an opportunity for public comment now on anything related to the budget hearing. Seeing no members of the public here wishing to comment, we can move on. May I have a motion to adjourn at the 2025-2026 final budget hearing?
You're moved.
Have a second.
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Committee, Lake Forest District 67 Board of Education meeting for September 23rd, 2020, excuse me, September 23rd, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Yon?
Here.
Mr. Berger?
Here.
Mr. Remus?
Here.
Ms. Engelberg?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Mr. Adamo?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Motion carries.
I'll now give a brief President's Report. What I like to use this time for is just to report on what the board has been up to behind the scenes, some of the things that are top of mind for us, some of the things that we've been working on. And one of the things that we spent a significant amount of time on this afternoon into the evening is, we had a bit of a extended workshop mini-retreat where we discussed our views on the role of the board, our responsibilities, our obligations, but also where we want our attention to be, where we want our priorities to be, what is important to us individually as board members, then collectively as a board. And one of the ways this all gets gathered together is in setting our board's goals for the district, and they're not just undefined aspirational goals, but we try to have them very defined in specific metrics. And this is something that we created 18 months ago now, was the first draft of the board goals, and it's always been intended to be an active, living, breathing document. We adjust as we meet goals, we adjust as we maybe realize the goals were not the best goals to target in the first place. We're always taking a fresh look at where we want our priorities to be, and that's where we spent a lot of time tonight, talking about adjusting our metrics for academic excellence, for culture in the school, and for fiscal responsibility. And one thing in particular that I thought was important to bring out, and kudos for Timo for bringing this up, is, you know, we all bring to the board our own perspective on what we think is important, but what's also important is the community perspective and the community's priorities, and one thing that was very helpful for that is the Fallon research that was done where the community tells us, what are their priorities? What do they think are important? And we absolutely took that into account in discussing what the board goals are. So that was very helpful to have in hand as we discussed where we want our priorities to be and what the metrics should be. And so that's something that the board has been paying a lot of attention to lately. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Montgomery for the district leadership report.
Thank you, Mr. Remus. Tonight's topic will, topics will cover widely varying from the first day of school to upcoming events, and Dr. Fitzsimmons and I will do this presentation jointly. The first day of school seems like a distant memory, but it's just over a month ago where we welcomed all of our students and faculty back to campus, and that joy and energy, while a little tired, is still felt in the hallways, and I was at DPM today, and I can still feel that energy, so, and we have not lost that spark, and the students are still filling our hearts. One of the things at DPM, every time I'm visiting as of late, I am standing in awe of the cafeteria and how the students are using that new space, so I want to thank the board and the spirit for the contributions to make that space feel new and fresh and exciting to be a part of. I will kick it over to Renee as she talks about connecting with district families.
Well, thank you, Dr. Montgomery, and as part of our second goal and also a shared value of empowering our communities and doing more than simply academic excellence, we had several community events, one being our elementary parent information nights on September 4th. They were wonderful. We also had our District 67 Executive APT meeting. A huge shout-out to our shared services team. Thank you to Dr. Jenny Sterpen, Dolly, Dr. Molly Escobar, and Dr. Christina Tanzi, and Mrs. Kristen Tivron with Mr. Jeremy Brown for presenting on a wonderful way to create a successful school experience and how to come back to school with as little stress as possible. They did an amazing job. It was a wonderful kickoff for our APT. We also had a visit from Winston, who is the Lake Forest Police Comfort Dog. He was wonderful to have. And also, we had our DPM open house on September 18th, and District 67 welcomed our new parents with a coffee at the beach.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzsimmons. A quick update on True North, and Mr. Adamo may add some flair to this in his report, but the True North collaborative, as I've, or cooperative that I've shared previously, was exploring the possibility of dissolving the cooperative with 18-member districts, all putting in their intent to withdraw. From the summer's work with the Subcommittee, of which I was a member, it changed from dissolving to possibly asking the governing board to consider a reorganization plan. That plan was introduced to the council last Wednesday, and we went over the plan for reorganization. The reorganization plan, I am in support of, which many of you know I was leading the effort because of the state of the cooperative to consider dissolving, but I am very much pleased with where we're headed right now and hope that the council will consider it seriously with the next meeting being in October for the reading, the first reading of the Articles of Agreement, the amendments we're proposing, and then November, a second reading and an intent to declare the districts that are intending to stay. What I'm excited about is that this new financial model will only incur cost to member districts if they're utilizing services. So if you maintain your membership, you get to maintain your portion of the fund balance that is in existence, as well as the ownership of the properties that are accumulated within the cooperative, so several of the school buildings. So if you stay a member, you maintain all of your assets, and if you want to utilize services, you pay only for the services in which you're utilizing. So there is no longer a country club fee, and if you want to walk away from the cooperative, there is no egregious cost associated. Some districts were charged, or going to be charged upwards of $2 million to exit, but if you do choose to walk away, while there's no financial component, you are walking away from your assets, both the fund balance assets and the property management assets. I think that is a fair way in which to exit an organization. I also think that it increases the likelihood that member districts will stay, because the only cost associated with staying is if you are sending the student to a day-school environment. It will also require a significant reduction in full-time equivalent, so I had to educate the council about that, but over 50% of the staff will be reduced at the end of the school year, and that's the only way to make this work. So we will be reducing the amount of offerings, which are largely in the professional development and administrative lens. The Articles of Agreement is suggesting or asking the council to support a new governing body made up of superintendents that will meet monthly, and then the council will meet statutorily required twice a year. So the council will come together twice a year, and then the superintendents will act as the governing board for monthly meetings to provide oversight within the cooperative. Do you have, does anybody have a question about that as I'm talking? Greg might be able to add.
Do we know how, like, what are Lake Forest assets and, that are tied up in the funds and the assets for buildings and such? Do we know how much of that Lake Forest is tied into?
A 1/18th. So 1/18th of the fund balances approximately, and please don't quote me, on the $78 million. So we have 1/18th of $7 or $8 million that we would be walking away from, and then the, whatever the sale price of the assets if and when they're sold.
Okay.
So 1/18th of that is what we would walk away from if we would no longer use True North.
That's 21 acres of real estate Highland Park.
And the, the, cons?
Presently zoned for, not zoned for residential, presents challenges about, you know, getting that to its highest and best use, probably administrative and legal issues we have to get there, but yeah.
It's almost like we have nothing to lose by staying in, is the way the restructuring is looking, or?
We're going to save a significant amount of saving, a significant amount financially from restructuring the way this is going to happen. Matt has worked very tirelessly on this, and it has been a lot of late meetings, but is going to make a very positive impact on the next year's budget.
In that we won't have to hire additional staff to accommodate our students that will be going there? Is that where the savings were?
So the savings because of the reduction in staff, so each district is saving, and I'm going to test my memory now, so I don't have this in front of me, I'm afraid I'm going to miss it, but one district was like $150,000 savings, and another one was $250,000 savings. I can't remember which one was 67 and which one was 115. So in the new model, from, from the entry level in the new model, we will save approximately $400,000 across both districts, and then our costs will only be, yep, annually, thank you, and we've already reduced, and you saw some of these explained in the budget hearing as well as things that Whitney brought up in her presentation of us reducing our services and bringing more things in-house. So those savings were already captured, you'll get another $400,000 annually on top of that, and we're only expending fees if we're sending students to the day-school, which will be approximately a fixed cost, fixed cost, approximately a range of $85,000 to $95,000. And it's, the true-up is a different in that, there will be a flat cost at the beginning of the school year, and we will be refunded if there is any underutilized of those fees as opposed to a true-up where they set the bar at $75,000, and then if they go over, you have to pay, you know, the true-up at the end of the school year. So it's a reverse true-up, I don't know what that's called, I'm making up new terms, but it's, it's much more, it's, it's much more advantageous in the model in which we set up to protect the districts, so they know that they can budget one set amount, and we will only get a refund if not all of those monies are spent. The group that came together was incredible. There's 10 of us that came together in a subgroup or a sub-subgroup, and I give many people credit, and they did a lot more work than I did, but I'm just happy that I was a part of the process and happy that we found a pathway forward, because there are students in the North Shore that are utilizing this, that need day-school support, that by and large, we can't offer for a very, less than 5% of the population across the North Shore of the member districts. So that was like a mini-report within a report, so I hope those of you who are timing me press pause on that, so I shouldn't be penalized. Next, I will kick it back over to Renee.
Well, Illinois State Report Card season is upon us, and we are eagerly awaiting the lift on the embargoed scores from the state, and our summative state assessment will be released soon. This is all based on the work that we've done over the year, including the IAR, Illinois Assessment of Readiness Summit of Scores. This will be released on October 30th, and we will not only be able to have confirmation of our performance, but we'll be able to assess the scores of our neighboring districts so that we'll have a sense of how we are doing compared to our peers. At this time, we really don't know, but we're excited to see that, and my team and I will be sharing this report at the November board meeting. Additionally, speaking of the Illinois State Report Card, we definitely want to share some news that was recently released by the state. For several years, I'm not sure if the community or if our board is aware of this, but Illinois had some of the highest and most stringent benchmarks for proficiency scores. Proficiency meaning those students who are meeting or exceeding the state standards. So high, in fact, that many times students who were getting to high school, taking AP and dual-credit classes, or students in elementary receiving good grades, were actually being told or labeled on these tests that they were not meeting standards. So the state went through a very rigorous 18-month research process. They right-sized some of those benchmarks. So for example, we saw math and ELA in certain, well, ELA being lowered, math being lowered in some of our younger grades, those proficiency benchmarks, and then actually science going up a little bit, feeling that some of the students who were taking the science performance were actually not mastering but being labeled as proficient. So we'll see some of those changes. I would like to mention, though, that even despite the right-sizing and the shifts in the benchmark, proficiency cut scores, our scores and our growth were still unprecedented in terms of growth and in terms of an increase in our overall proficiency marks. So we are really cautiously optimistic, AKA beyond excited, to share with you soon, and we will, as I said, be bringing some more information to you in October, just to help the board and our community understand what to be expecting, and then our November report will be all about the report card. This is also me. Okay. Okay. So around Goal One, we have academic excellence. Again, not solely focused on academic excellence, but one of the things we are thinking about is how do we make sure that teaching and learning is happening in the most effective way? How are we ensuring that teachers have the resources and all of the strategies at their fingertips? So Kagan Training is essentially a brand name, if you will, of a different way of making sure that students are all engaged, that students are participating, that we are leveraging the highest, most effective pedagogical teaching strategies that we possibly can. So we're really excited that this is one of our goals and one of our, under our academic excellence bucket. We have five days of training this year. We just had two days last week, and we're training teacher leaders to kind of be a train-the-trainer model. Twenty-five educators are participating in this, so we're really excited, and we will have our next training in January.
Thank you so much. The Technology Working Group is going to meet next month, and these are 12 community members who will discuss and share feedback on the new K-4 policy, which keeps iPads at school instead of traveling back and forth from home. And additionally, the, in the October meeting, the Working Group will be looking at the AI policy that's in draft form, that Jordan has been working and collaborating with teams of individuals, so we'll get and gather that feedback as well. In November, I will be hosting, in partnership with Fan, a book talk on Dream School: Finding the Right, or the College That's Right for You. The author is Jeffrey Salingo. This is a brand-new book. It was released on September 9th, and I think it will be a topic that whether or not you're a 67 parent, or 115 parent, or a grandparent, or aunt, or uncle, it will help provide guidance to young people as they're trying to select the right school for them. I think that these types of communities that we serve are predisposed to think there's 50 and only 50 schools you can apply to, and I think the idea behind this book, or the premise behind this book, is that how do you sift through the countless options and find the one in which is right for your young person? I'm excited to have this conversation with Jeffrey. I have not read the book yet. I think it was just delivered to me today, so I'm excited to get a leg up on this, and if you would like to join us, it will be at the Gorton Center on November 3rd, and I know it will be a robust conversation. Varsity Field Flex is on the, the second showing. It's actually the third showing. There's one for the students that kicked off Homecoming Week, but it is Saturday, October 20th, it's 25th at 6:00 p.m. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. Bring some lawn chairs, bring a blanket, and we will, in partnership with the Boosters, be showing Hotel Transylvania, which is apropos for the Halloween season. Upcoming events, please note that there is no school on October 13th, and there is no school on October 24th. And you will also see the Halloween events at each one of the elementaries, the Monster Mash, the Monster Mash, the Boo Bash, and the Cherokee Spook Fest. All three of those are coming, and then we have a choir concert, as well as the conferences. That concludes our report, but happy to answer any questions that you may have above and beyond True North.
Can I actually ask a question about True North? Did we officially vote to withdraw? And if we did, can we and other member districts reevaluate and take it back?
So the, we voted for the intent to withdraw. We do not have to take a vote to withdraw our withdrawal, but we have to let True North know our decision by November if we're planning on staying. And Greg would be the conduit for that information, letting them know our decision.
The other member districts that had previously voted to intend to withdraw, are they happy with this new plan as well? Like, are they all on board?
Well, so, all on board is an absolute scare me, but I will tell you that the feedback from the superintendent's group was that 16 of the 18 districts were in favor of this reorganization plan. The questions and, the question-answer session from the meeting last Wednesday, I thought, was exceptionally productive, and there was a sense of gratitude that we found a path forward that didn't resolve in dissolution. So I am exceptionally hopeful that we are on the right track. The October Board Meeting will yield more questions and answers, and that's when the first reading of the Articles of Agreement will happen. So you have two more votes that the Council has to take in support of reorganization before we actually have a concrete direction from the Council of what to do. If both of those motions pass in the respective months, the new Governing Board will be in place in January.
I just want to follow up on the cost. So if, in this new model, would we still be getting services directly to the school buildings, or would it just be still supporting the outplacement, like the actual True North School? And I know we talked about bringing stuff in-house. If we do stay with True North in, in this new model, does that then lessen our cost for hiring people to bring the services into our schools?
I'm going to try to answer your question, and if you, if I missed the mark, let me know. The, the cost will be solely associated with outplace students, per student $85,000 to $95,000. There will be no services that are coming from True North. The services that were coming from True North were largely occupational therapy, physical therapy, and professional development. So professional development will be no more, so there will be nobody to come in. But we told you that we, in workshop, that we have an instructional coach that we acquired from True North to help us in special education coaching. Then the occupational and physical therapy, we also brought OT in, so there will be very few things that we need to add, if anything. The cost will be primarily, if not solely, in outplace students, outplacement of students.
Any other questions for Matt or Renee? Nope. All right. Now, we also have another opportunity for public comment, limited to the agenda items. Seeing no members of the public present, we will move on to the liaison reports. We've already discussed True North extensively. Mr. Adamo, is there anything else you wish to add?
I don't think I have anything I could possibly add.
I, I will note, though, tremendous thanks and gratitude to both you and Matt for shepherding us through this process. I know we're not across the finish line, but I have no doubt you understood exactly what you were signing up for when you agreed to be the True North Liaison, so thank you for all of that hard work. We appreciate it. There's nothing for me to report as the legislative liaison. Thankfully, Springfield has been quiet lately, at least on the school legislation front. Jerry, did you want to give a report on your attendance at the Ed Committee for District 115 last week?
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. The District 115 Board, its Ed Committee sitting as a whole, so that would be the entire Board, invited representatives from our district and District 65 to attend their meetings this year. There are several meetings remaining. At this first meeting, there were three principal topics that were, that were addressed. One was what the District 115 Board called "Three Common Themes for Improvement." A second was artificial intelligence, and a third was a pilot program, I believe, a scout seminar to provide additional support for students. With respect to the first item, "Three Common Themes of Improvement," this was from information that the administration had gathered, and the three categories were strengthening executive functioning and study skills across all grade levels. A second was improving the transition from middle school to high school, especially in academic rigor and placement. And the third was enhancing communication and awareness of available resources at the high school. This was, this information was gathered from a variety of sources, including fellow Board members might recall, earlier this year, we were invited to a, an exchange with high school students at, at Lake Forest to, to hear their, their views of how they are finding high school, and in particular, the, the transition. And we probably met with maybe a dozen or more students in, in the evening. One thing that was particularly interesting, I thought, was the second one, improving the transition from middle school to high school, especially in academic rigor and placement, because, among other things, it opens up opportunities for our administration to collaborate with the District 115 administration and the teachers as well. On that note, the second item they dealt with, artificial intelligence, this is a perfect example of how teachers from the two districts and the administration, working together to try to arrive at not just a, a policy manual, but also to share their experiences in the classroom and to develop strategies for teachers to use in a, obviously rapidly changing environment. In that regard, there were two students who were members of this committee, and in response to a question from Dr. Montgomery, they explained to the adults in the room how they, in particular, use AI. And from my perspective, I thought it was, it was quite enlightening. It was interesting also, to the extent that they had mentioned one or two things that some of the adults weren't aware of, were uses that students were putting AI to, which I think calls up the, the importance for teachers and administrators in the first instance and throughout, to be informed in their work by how are students actually using AI, whether it's consistent with an assignment or, in some cases, inconsistent. And last thing on that topic is, one of the things the students stressed was very much their request for, for guidelines, what not to do. They were, they were very clear in this. They wanted to understand better what it was they were, they were not supposed to stray into, or how best can they use AI to, to help themselves. The, the third and final topic that they dealt with was this, this pilot program, scout seminar, and Dr. Fitzsimmons, if there's something that I'm missing, maybe you can jump in. This was very interesting. It represents about, I think it was about 70% of the students, the freshmen, the first-year students, to receive these additional support services. And in many ways, it was a, it, it appears as a, as we have Portrait of a Learner, sort of a, a self-awareness of the portrait of this particular learner. So each student being invited in defined categories to get a better view of how they're doing and how they can improve their skills, their awareness, their interactions with, with others, which I thought highlights another opportunity, I think, for this district to collaborate with District 115, teacher-to-teacher, which I understand is, is, as part of what the effort, the purpose is of inviting representatives from this body and District 65. So I thought it was a wonderful opportunity to be exposed to what the high school is, is doing in these regards, and I look forward to the future meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Any questions for Jerry about that report? Monica, is there any liaison report for APT?
Yeah, there is. They had a very exciting kickoff.
Excellent.
I had to leave before the end. Apparently, I missed the dog, which I'm really sad about, but it was a, a great meeting. It was well-attended.
Winston. His name was Winston.
Winston.
And I care about him deeply.
He's adorable. I'm sorry I missed him. Renee kind of alluded to it. They were led by Dr. Jenny Sterpen. They had a panel of school psychologists and social workers that included Dr. Molly Escobar, Dr. Christina Tanzi, Kristin Tivron from DPM, and Jeremy Brown from Sheridan, to speak to parents about how to support kids during the back-to-school transition. They also highlighted ways that students are supported in the schools, which includes everything from having staff presence in the hallways to create a welcoming environment, having quiet call rooms where elementary kids can take a break, and brain breaks, and Friday dance parties in the middle school, which also sounds super fun. There's a new section in the weekly newsletters that they called out by Dr. Sterpen called "The Magic of Belonging," and I wanted to just read a part from her first entry on September 12th that I thought was good. It says, "Friendships takes, friendships take effort. Stress is normal. Belonging grows when we show up for each other. One of the biggest ways we can support students is by giving them the time and space to navigate situations and learn from them, so they build the confidence and skills they'll carry forward. By keeping relationships at the center, we set the foundation for a year where success and well-being thrive together." So that's a highlight of her new section in the newsletter, and look for that, along with other ways that they support our kids.
Thank you. Any questions for Monica on the APT report? All right. We're going to move on to the action items. First up, approval of the 2025-2026 final budget. May I have a motion to approve the final budget?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, may I have a motion to waive the first reading of Press Issues 118 and 119?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issues 118 and 119?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda items listed in this evening's agenda?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote, please?
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to FOIA requests. FOIA request number five of five was completed for Frank McCormick. At this time, we'll have another opportunity for public participation. Seeing no one from the public present, we'll move on. Wrapping up, just some announcements. Matt also already mentioned some of these, but no school October 13th, or October 24th for parent-teacher conferences. Next Board Meeting is October 28th, and that will also be a Committee of the Whole Meeting for Finance and Operations. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for September 23rd, 2025?
Still moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
We are adjourned.